We just stay where we are.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.
I'm gonna officially start this. So if anybody needs to take a 30-second break, go for it. But Rennie, you want me to dive in? All right, thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our monthly caucus meeting. Today is Monday, November 30th. My name is Shawt, the council president and organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. That members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, I've reserved the right to mute anyone who unmutes. Council members, city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background. If the council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded, and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. Although we will not have public speaking team, you can sign up to speak at tomorrow's council meeting by emailing Elisa Tinty by 12:00 PM, or by adding written comments at the email address emtinty@kingston-ny, or by dropping comments off at the Dropbox located outside the side doors of City Hall. Send a text message to the following number, 845-594-6222. As the organizer, I've reserved the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have in attendance the Chair, Majority Leader, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, council members, Alderwoman Rita Worthington, Alderman Steve Shabbat, Alderman Doug Coop, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morel, Alderman Patrick Allerman. City staff, we have Clerk Elisa Tom Crawler John, Corp Counsel Kevin Bryant, Corp Counsel Dan Gardenstein, and City Assessor Dan Baker. Thank you for your time, and I now turn the floor over to Chair Rennie Scott Childress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our delayed start here. We've got a lot of work done in our previous meeting. We've got a lot on the docket for tomorrow night. Most of it is some fairly rote stuff, but we will make sure that we get clear on the difference. Much of it has to do with the budget and various issues. So without further ado, let's get started. The first item of business is a resolution regarding the transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $148,322. Doug, you want to give us a background here?
Yeah, this is a transfer from the Recreation Fee Reserve Trust Fund per resolution made in July of number 119. So it's the transfer from the trust fund into construction materials and supplies. So the financial impact is zero.
Excellent. So anybody got questions, issues, concerns? Enthusiasms? Getting our park in fine order here. Parks general in fine order. All right. Resolution 182 is another transfer in Parks and Recreation in the amount of $75,000.
Also from the same resolution, number 119 in July, $75,000 for the trust fund into construction materials and supplies. There's zero financial impact.
All right. Any questions, concerns, issues relating to this one? All right. Sorry, I'm just trying to get some things in order here. Following that is Resolution 183, authorizing the approval to enter into a stipulation of settlement correcting and reducing 2019 and 2020 assessment rolls for this piece of property.
This was on, this along with the next two resolutions are recommendations from the assessor. This deals with the negotiation with Key Bank for a reduction in the, in the assessment. There was no adjustment made in 2019, but in 2020, there's a reduction from approximately $1,003,000 to $1,000,001. The actual amount is a reduction of $184,500. This is at the recommendation of the assessor, Dan Baker. Any other questions? I think Dan can respond to them.
All right. Yeah, the next two are both the same issue there. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of these three settlements? You're good on all three? All right, very good. I hit the wrong button. So we'll move on then to 186, another transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department, this one for $32,910. Doug, back to you again.
Yeah, it's a transfer from, you know, seasonal employees, playground seasonal employees and adult seasonal employees into about 10 different accounts for parks. Overtime pay, equipment, vehicle maintenance, hot center, electric.
Can I, can I just ask one thing?
Yep.
I'm sorry. If these transfers are zero financial impact, can we just move through them? I don't see the thing that we have to go through, read it all, et cetera. It's a zero impact. The state is a zero impact. Move this along. Thank you.
Okay, I'm good with that. Move on to 187, Resolution of the Common Council. This is also to cover shortfalls. And this one appears to also be zero impact, though it doesn't say so in the committee report. Am I right?
Yeah, this is also a transfer, $59,365 with zero financial impact.
All right, 188, transfer in the wastewater treatment plant.
$12,000, no financial impact.
All right. So I'll keep going through. If anybody wants to talk about any of these, though, give me a shout. Okay? I think Tony's right. 189, transfer another in the wastewater treatment plant for $7100. Again, no financial impact, I believe.
Yes.
It would be nice if we got those, that zero put in there on the line for estimated financial impact. 190?
Yeah, zero financial impact.
So 190, also zero financial impact in the police department?
Police department, yep.
Okay, getting some budget in line there. All right. Next one is 191, transfer in the police department for $375,000 to cover the expense of fixed mounted license plate reader. This one also came to finance. This one, I think, bears some discussion because of the grants associated with it.
Yeah, the grants are, the total amount for the major equipment line is $375,000, of which $225,000 is to come from the grants, New York State grants. The financial impact is from contingency of $150,000. Michelle, I think, has a comment on this.
Yes, Michelle.
So at this point, we have to front the, the whole 375 until we are reimbursed. Is that correct?
That's not quite how I understand it. It's that the, we're putting the money aside for the purchase, and the chief will be looking into seeing what the cost is in terms of, you know, actual unit cost, and then we'll be, he'll be thinking that through and seeing what's, what's the maximum he can purchase with the amount.
Correct. But we were told in finance that it would come out of contingency. So what is the amount going to come out of our contingency?
$150,000.
So he's going to wait until the money comes in from the grant?
I do not remember him making a promise along those lines.
Okay, so can we ask, is John Tilly still on?
Yes.
So what is the current? Hi, John. What is our current contingency balance, please?
Give me one minute.
Thank you.
Sure.
I thought we were still up in the several hundreds of thousands of dollars, but...
We're currently at 671-038.
And then, well, the other question that I have, that Michelle's question raises in my mind is, that was not, I think, made clear in the discussion about whether or not the chief would purchase, you know, using $375,000, and then would we be reimbursed by the New York State grants, or will we have that money in hand first?
I don't know all the particulars of this grant, Rennie, but the vast majority of grants, nearly every grant, particularly the state grants, are on a reimbursement basis, which would normally require the city to outlay the cash first and then get reimbursed.
Okay, so we don't foresee any further large draws on that $600, something thousand dollars?
Um, before the end of the year.
In other words, will it, will it, will it out the?
No.
Before the end of the year.
Not that I'm aware of. As we move forward towards the end of the year, I think we should have a lot of accounts balanced. There might be some small departments that have some, some overages, but I can't think of anything significant at this time.
All right, thank you, Tony.
John, I mean, I know you don't know the specifics, all the specifics about this grant, and so, you know, with the financial situation it is, this is a federal grant or a state grant?
State grant.
State. So, and if we were to find out, and if the state is going to pull back money for these, for grants that they're awarding, I'm assuming the chief would know that before he went out and purchased it? If we're gonna, if we had to front this money, 375, assuming he would know before he went and purchased them that the state is going to say, we can't give you any, we can't give you any funding this year. I'm not sure how that works.
Well, typically, on any of these grants, there would be a grant contract before we move forward with, with spending money. But once again, you know, with any of the state grants, you'd have to look at the actual language in that grant contract, and whether or not the state could withhold funds pending, you know, if there's cash flow issues, whether or not the state could, could hold funds if funding was not available to them. I think it's unlikely, Tony, that the state would walk away from the contract midstream, but, you know, with any of these contracts, you have to look at the language, and there's a possibility.
So that's something that the chief would, whoever wrote the grant, has that, has that wording or that contract in front of them?
You, you would have to, yeah, I, I, well, I don't know whether or not they even have the contract in front of them. I've seen some state contracts that have that language. Once again, you know, the state honors these contracts. However, if there's a shortfall of funding, they have the ability to modify. We have no word that that's going to happen, but sure, on some of these contracts, it's always a possibility to concern. I don't think it's likely.
I wonder, Doug, would you be open to speaking either with the chief or with Julie Noble? I understand she's the person who obtained the grant. Would you be willing to speak to them before caucus, before council meeting tomorrow to ensure that the grant is certain?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay. Because I think that is concerning. We don't want to get, we don't want to pay out $375,000.
I will do that, but I would think in the worst case, if, if we placed an order for the major equipment and then the, the state grant fell through, the, the most exposure we have, we would have would be some type of a cancellation charge. But I, I will do that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm not sure about the certainty. Well, maybe it's a discussion for, in general discussion, but absent of having the grant contract, I don't know that anyone can answer that. You know, you'd have to, you'd have to see what's in the grant contract and what that language states.
Right, but we're, that's the thing, is we, we understand that Julie Noble, Noble obtained the grant, but we don't know, you know, at what stage that is. Kevin gave us a thumbs up.
Okay.
The language of the grant, the way I see it is because of the Department of Budget, no matter what the language of the grant says, if they're withholding funds or holding back funds or not releasing funds due to the budget shortfall at the state level, until we know for sure what's happening with federal relief, the contract is irrelevant until we have certainty through the State Department of Budget. So caution here, that's all.
Andrew Shaw.
The chief into this meeting, would you appreciate that?
I, I, well, yeah, the thing is, though, I thought that it was Julie Noble who obtained the grant, so I don't know if the chief would know the particulars of the grant.
Well, I think I just got a text that he's coming, just to, if there is more questions, so.
Well, if the chief is coming.
So.
I guess that's more like a yell down the hall.
Actually, I had to drag them out of a barn, so just give me one minute. He's on his way down the driveway.
Oh, that's that smell of sheep. Okay.
Yeah. One minute, please.
But yeah, I mean, this is, this has been my experience on the council, that the normal process is that we spend, and then we get reimbursed, and so we would not be on the hook for this.
This is not normal times. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and the State Department of Budget, it can, has already been withholding 20% of budgets, municipal budgets, and can hold back anything at any time right now while we are under executive order. So it's, we're not under normal times. Thank you.
Patrick O'Reilly, while we're waiting for the chief?
I guess I'll wait for the chief. Thanks.
Okay. Tony Davis?
Yes, Tony Davis here. And so, yes. I guess what I was going to try to say is that, I guess the animated chief will be able to answer the question in regard to, and, you know, would he go out and purchase this? So hopefully he has some answers for that. Would he go out and still purchase and? If he didn't think. Or my other question, my other question was, is this something that we could put off until, you know, next year or something, when, when we might have a better picture how the economy's doing? And that was going to be my other question to him. Does he need, I know he was, he would need all the equipment, but is this something that we could pull off? You know, is your time sensitive, a date for him to be able to do this for this grant?
You know, it would, it would seem to me that if the state grant fell through for, for the, in order for the KPD to make this procurement, they'd need a budgetary change, which obviously we would not approve.
Yeah. Plus, you know, this is a question of, well, go ahead, Steve Shabbat.
Well, I thank you for deferring there. I think, as far as putting it off, I think the chief was asked quite explicitly, and I know I asked him the question, is he requesting this because of the current situ- -ation, which he responded affirmative to. So, you know, he wants to put that to immediate use to address what's happening in the city, you know, with the, you know, with shootings and, you know, violence in the city. So, you know, I would like to see this, you know, come forward at this time. You know, if we wait another year, you know, we may be missing an opportunity, you know, to help out with this situ-
Ready?
Yes.
This is Rita Worthington, Rita Worthington. So I want to, I'm going to agree with Michelle, Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch. You know, I'm not, I'm on the fence with this anyway, because I'm not sure if we need more equipment for the police rather than using that money for other services. But if the chief cannot answer the question, if we're going to the details of the grant, I don't know if I'm going to be voting for this. I want to make sure that if we're going to be purchasing this equipment, that we are going to get reimbursed for it. And if we're not, I know, uh, Doug Coop said that it would just be a modification of the budget, but, you know, I'm not entirely sure of that. So I would like to have details on whether or not we're going to, in fact, get reimbursed for this. If not, I'm probably going to be a no on this.
All right.
All right, I'm on. I'm sorry, apologize for that. She did drag me out of the barn, so I'm here now.
Well, keep the camera off, please.
Oh, absolutely. You don't want to see the way I'm covered in grease right now, so.
All right. Well, thanks for joining us, chief. So we're looking at this request to take money out of contingency in order to purchase the license plate readers that we discussed in finance a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And we've got some concern because, you know, grants usually are reimbursements of money spent. And so there's concern that since we're in this financially precarious time, we're looking for a little more assurance than usual that this grant will definitely come through, so that we're not left on the hook for something more than the $150,000 from contingency that we're looking for.
Right. So as far as I know, and I've asked Julie Noble to kind of weigh in on this, I mean, she might be trying to get on. From the grant perspective, we never had one that once was granted to us ever in, in anything we've ever done at the police department that they've ever not paid. The city is going to be into this for $150,000. The rest of it is being funded by that New York State grant. So as far as on the hook, I mean, truthfully, the grant, we will spend the money once everything is in place to buy it. We're still looking at the number of cameras, the locations, all that is still being in the works right now. It's still considered in the works.
Right, but the big question has, well, go ahead, Tony. Tony Davis has a question.
So, chief, are you saying then, my question is, if we pay, we have to put out the 375? And is that something you're going to go right away and, and start to, to purchase these cameras? Or do you, are you going to wait for the grant to come there and to get that matching funds? I mean, I, okay, I guess to get the rest of 275 or what it might come to, before you go out and purchase these cameras? Our, our question is, is that if the state, you know, the, the economy is that the state could pull back money from, you know, from the grants that they're awarding. And as, as already been mentioned, and then the city would be, be responsible for, we would be on the hook for $375,000 if the state came back and said, well, we can't give you that matching funds or give you those funds for that grant. And my question is, is this something you need right away? Is this something that could be pushed off until we get a better picture of what the economy looks like in early part of next year, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, as far as the, the state side of it, as far as the grant side of it, the money is essentially guaranteed. We've never applied, or I've been dealing with grants on this for a long time. The state has never put out the grant, awarded the grant, and then has turned around and said, oh, we made a mistake, we're not doing that. Okay, Julie's calling in right now.
Okay.
In essence, you have, you have a handshake assurance, right? So that's as good as a contract, in essence.
As we've done with, as we've done with all these grants, and back in 1996, and again, I believe in 1999, the city went for over half a million dollars in police officers in the New York, in the U.S. Cops Fast Grant. And the city, again, put out that money and then was reimbursed. So the tactical grants we've applied for through the state, same thing, we've laid, outlaid the money, and as soon as we show the purchase, we show that the equipment is, is in our possession, then the grant gets turned back, the grant gets repaid by the state. So we've never had any issues at all when it's, since it was awarded, that money is earmarked at the state or the federal level.
All right, Michelle Hirsch, and then I see a caller too. I'm assuming that's Julie. If it is, welcome, Julie. If it's not, welcome home too.
Hi, I just want to address Chief Tinty. I know that things have always worked the, you know, way they've worked, but we are not in normal times right now. And my concern is because I read the New York State Department of Budget 400 and something page report explaining how during an executive order, the state can withhold payments to any municipality at any time. That includes the cities, the towns, the villages, our school district. That includes any monies that have been promised for grants. I mean, they could just be held up for a while, but it, it will happen. It could possibly happen. These are not just normal, regular times. We're in the middle of a pandemic. Before going into the pandemic, the state had a $6 billion deficit. After the first wave of the pandemic, the state is in a $16 billion hole now. And now we're going into wave two of the pandemic. So the State Department of Budget has the authority to just withhold money or hold it back, and we do not, even having, you know, a new president come in, we don't know what reimbursement will look like from the feds to the state level, and how whole they will make us. That's all. It's just my concern. It's just not normal times. Thank you.
Let's see. Patrick, do you want to go first, or shall we put the question to Julie Noble first? Okay, Patrick will hold up. So Julie?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight at the last second here.
No problem.
So our question is, we're looking at this request from KPD for $375,000 to cover the purchase of license plate readers. We're seeing, of course, that it would require $150,000 from contingency with the promise of a grant from New York State for $225,000. And as I'm sure you gathered from what Alderwoman Hirsch was saying just now, we've got some concerns that the state might, at the last minute, pull this money back and leave us in the lurch for some or all of this $225,000. So we're looking for some kind of assurance, some kind of sign that we're, we're good with this money.
Can't speak on behalf of the state, but what I can say is that I had a call with them just today about the project, and they are pushing very aggressively for us to advance this. They're actually waiting, have been waiting on us for decision-making. And they are, we, we're ready. We were talking today about modifying my LED contract to have this be phase two, as, as an extension to, to move this forward. There's many other projects on the state level, and many other grants that have not come out, and all regular grants that come out on an annual level, on an annual basis that have not come out and been announced, and they're being cautious about that. But this one, they're certainly being aggressive on. I mean, I had a meeting with them today about it. So I can't, none of us can foresee what's going to happen in the future, but I can say what I know happened today, when I know it's been in communication with, I know that we've had meetings with them in the last few weeks. I know that we've had onsite meetings, we've looked at specific locations, and they are ready for us to be moving forward to be signing onto a contract. So I, that, I mean, that seems like security to me.
Okay, thank you. Steve Shabbat, then Patrick O'Reilly?
Thanks, Rennie. This is for the chief. You still there, chief?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to speak for you, so I, I just want to, you know, reiterate, you know, what my memory tells me happened, you know, when we spoke about this. Maybe that's not a good thing, but anyway- about this. Maybe that's not a good thing, but, uh, anyway, you were asked about this tool being used, or, you know, whether it was requested at this particular time because of the events going on in the city and, uh, you know, trying to keep tabs on some of these people coming and going, um, shootings and, and whatnot. And I believe you replied in the affirmative that, you know, this was one of the reasons that you were seeking this at this time. So were this to be put off, do you think you would be missing a, a window of opportunity here? Um, you know, we would like to see this put to good use right away. You know, I don't know if, uh, you know, would putting it off, you know, not be a good thing, for lack of a better word?
Yeah, as a result of, uh, the violence we've had, the shootings, um, all, I believe all of you reached out to me at some point and said, what can we do? Uh, we can't live in a city that people feel unsafe. Since we don't have, uh, there's apprehension on the part of most residents to participate or to turn over information they have through their own camera systems, uh, this is a viable alternative. And when Julie mentioned that she could get this grant, uh, 225,000 for an investment of 150 for a total 375, again, I'll, I'll use the same words I used last time, this is a no-brainer. And I understand that times are tough, but each and every one of you, including myself, have to answer for the public safety of this city. Um, it was unprecedented, the level of violence that we've experienced. It's attributed to a number of factors, and the LPRs is one tool out there, is a very successful tool that can be used to make the city safer. Absolutely, 100% agree with that. Uh, no one's gonna change my mind, the statistics are there. I know there are some questions about, uh, its use. Uh, we can safeguard any way you'd like, but I can tell you that the tool itself, uh, is instrumental in solving many, many crimes throughout the state and in this country because of, of the technology. And I think for us, it is a balance between the safety and security of the residents and also their privacy. Uh, the LPRs do not record personal information, just the vehicle information, and then we can use that to continue our investigation. So, um, Steve, you're absolutely 100%. I think this is a golden opportunity for us. I, I can't thank Julie enough for, for putting the effort on this one. Um, and it comes at a great time. So I understand you have to make the decision when it comes to financial stuff, but again, to me, forgetting, we're getting 375 for $150,000 investment. It's a 40-plus million dollar budget. I, I, I don't see, uh, I don't see that there should be much, much discussion short of the, the implications of privacy, and we've already addressed those.
And if I could just speak to the timing for just a moment to, to dovetail off of the chief, the reason why we even are in the pool to be eligible for this is because of our commitment to the New York Power Authority to be working directly with them to retrofit all of our LED lighting. And the threshold that was determined, was determined based on the amount of lighting that we have. So the $375,000 cap was based on the threshold of our inventory of lights. And the timing is something that we can't just put off if we are to take advantage of this opportunity, because it would be a, an addendum or a, a second phase of the, of the existing contract that we have. So this isn't eligible to any community, it's eligible to us because we are working with NIPA directly, and we already have a contract that is active. That current contract, which is, is now at substantial completion, the LED project, which is also what I spoke to them about today, we will be signing off on that by the end of the month. And so we will be extending that contract, uh, should this move forward.
You're muted, Rennie. Rennie, you're mute.
Right. It's starting to look like Newark Airport. So we've got, uh, Pat, then Tony, then Doug, then Michelle.
Uh, thanks, Patrick O'Reilly. Uh, chief, um, are most of the, the rising violence in our, sorry, the rising violence in our town, uh, is, is most of that being committed in vehicles or from a vehicle?
Yes. Yeah, we can, we can show at least, um, in the majority of cases, the, uh, the suspects are coming and going in a vehicle.
Good, thank you. Uh, Tony?
Uh, well, yeah, and Julie, thanks for coming on, and chief, thanks for coming on. Uh, you know, if, if, uh, Julie is stating that, and she's the project manager for this, this particular grant here, and she's stating that she's had communication with them this today, and that, and from her conversation, that this, and state is anxious and pushing this forward. And then I, I don't have a problem with that if, you know, that is what the conversation is, and that they are, they are, you know, wanting Kingston to move forward with this. And then that's the indication to me that, and this money is gonna be available. And, and again, all we can do is go by and their, their word, and if they're pushing that this today, saying that they're just waiting for, uh, this P O, if you want to, and so we can get this moving. And then, and, you know, then I have to be satisfied with that, that they're going to honor this, uh, 250 or whatever.
Great. Uh, Doug?
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the issue, the issue here is, is, is that people are worried about is the risk that the state may not come through with the grant. And even if there was a 10, 20, 30% risk that they're coming through, that in itself is no reason to vote this down. Because if we vote it down, then for damn sure, we're not gonna get the $225,000. The chief wants to have it. Uh, I think the, the probability of getting the grant is great. Let's go. Thank you.
Right. Michelle, then Steve?
Hi, hi Julie, it's Michelle. Um, thank you for your work on, um, you know, getting this grant and, um, getting it added to the contract. Did they give any, any indication as to like how quickly they would, you know, send us the money?
Uh, so they, they're not gonna be sending us any money. So the vendors, what's going to happen is that we are going, uh, Lieutenant Bonds and, uh, and others met onsite, reviewed locations. Uh, we've met with Kyle Backintosh, the IT director, to talk about specifics about, um, the technology. And what happens is, uh, New York Power Authority has a subcontractor, Wendell, and Wendell is the same company that I've been working with for the last two years on the LED retrofit. They directly purchase the equipment from the vendor, and the vendor comes and installs the equipment, and then we pay. We, they invoice us and then we will pay it. So basically, if, if they don't end up paying anything, we don't end up paying anything. So there's no risk to us. If, if, there's no financial risk to us, if the state chooses to not move forward with this, which again, there's no indication whatsoever that they would, I had a call with them today, but they are going to be purchasing the materials directly through the vendor, and then we would be getting invoice. So again, if they are not putting out any money, we're not putting out any money. We're matching, they're matching whatever we would put in, or you could see it as we're matching whatever they put in. Basically, they, we would make an agreement, they would say, you know, for $375,000, and this is what they're, this is what they're calculating right now. They've come to our sites, they've seen how many lanes it would cover, you know, what directions we're looking at, what are our priorities, what are our top, you know, X number of priorities for intersections. And they're gonna come back to us with a solid number that says, for $375,000, this is how many intersections we can cover, this is the amount of equip, of equipment we can get you for this amount of money. And then we're gonna sign off and say yes or no, or whatever we want to say or negotiate with them. And then they're going to directly work with the vendor. So they're not giving us any money. We're going to be, they're just, we're gonna see the equipment appear, and then we're going to be invoiced and pay up, pay the dividend of whatever we owe.
Great, thank you. Steve Shabbat?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is gonna be my final thought, I, I hope. Um, I think we're all, we're all big boys and girls here. We know anytime we deal with the state with a grant, there's always a possibility that something can go wrong. Um, for a couple of years ago, there were big reports that we were not gonna receive the big grant for Kinderland, and it was front page, and, you know, it didn't come to pass. Um, you know, I really can't think of too many instances where, uh, the, the state has reneged on something they have told us we're gonna get. Um, you know, I know times are a little different now, um, but, you know, I, I really can't see holding back on what I consider a vital piece of equipment for the safety of this community. I'm willing to take the chance based on what Julie says, um, and the chief says, and, you know, they feel very confident that we're gonna get this money. And as Julie says, even though we're not, we're not gonna lose money even if it doesn't come through. So, and as somebody else said, if we don't vote yes, then there is no chance we're gonna get any money. So, you know, I'm, I'm ready to move forward on this. I, I think this is a great idea. It's a good opportunity. I, I would hate to miss it.
Don Tollman?
I think that we're hearing a lot from our constituents about the need to combat the increasing violence. The chief speaks about this tool as a fantastic tool to help him do his job. So I say that because of the grant money and the timing, all things considered, we should buy the equipment that the chief has identified to, that he thinks will make a difference in doing his job.
Rennie, may I ask Chief, can you say something, please?
Sure, Rita, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, um, actually, uh, Don, Don gave me a great segue here. So, cause I, listen, I know we're all talking about the financial impact of this, but that's not my only concern. My concern is that I live in a ward where most of the people believe that they need to be kept safe from the police. While I don't believe, believe that we should be getting more equipment handed over to the police. And I know the chief says that this is going to make things safer. And again, it's not so much what I believe, but I'm listening to my constituents, and I just believe that maybe some of these grants that we're going for, or some of these other funds that we have can be put to use in, um, some other services that's gonna make our city safer. Don says that he's hearing from constituents that, you know, this is going to be a good tool to make the city safe. I hear the direct opposite. So again, my, you know, my concern is not so much financial, it's, um, what my constituents are saying to me. So either way, I'm going to be a no on this. And, uh, so that's, that's my general feeling about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Yeah, it seems to me that, uh, from what the chief is saying, that this is a tool of investigation rather than enforcement. So in that sense, this is, uh, it seems to me that this offers the possibility for the police to do work that leads to resolution of crimes, and might then, uh, have a great power to reduce the kinds of events that have been, you know, front page news around the country. Uh, so, um, let's see, Patrick, I believe you had your hand up?
Yeah, Patrick O'Reilly. You know, of course, a tool like this, in the wrong hands, is dangerous, like any tool. Um, you know, we have, I guess we have to have faith that our police department is gonna use this for good, um, and to help the violence in our city. I can, as a person who studied history, I can see how this could be used by a government to do horrible things to people. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, and, you know, we, we have to hope that that's not done. We're, we're a body here, we're a legislature, we're, we're, we're elected, uh, we could always, uh, remove this from the police department if we needed to. We could, we could say, okay, you guys are not using this properly, you're yet not using this tool properly, and we can remove it. So our system, our checks and downs system kind of allows us to pull this, uh, back from the police, I believe. It, it, um, I hope we have that ability. Uh, can anybody speak on that, that we could, uh, uh, if the police department doesn't use this properly, we could remove it from them? Can we do that? I think we can. Andrea, do you, uh, have any thoughts on that, or?
Uh, Chief, while Andrea's getting, oh, there we go. Andrea, go ahead.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I think we could make that request to the chief, um, to ask him to stop it, stop using it, if we feel that really that would come from the mayor, just because the chief does work for the mayor. Um, but he might be the answer and maybe assure us right now.
Yeah, so the, uh, so no different than the firearms we carry on our belts, no different than the vehicles we travel from call to call. A steak knife can be used to hurt someone or can be used to cut a piece of meat to eat at dinner, right? So as far as the information gathered from the LPR, it is the least intrusive mechanism for investigative purposes. If I were to ask for cameras throughout the city, actual video cameras or surveillance cameras, I could see a large population of Kingston, number of residents upset about that request. They would be concerned about the privacy issues. But if you're tracking vehicle movement, and again, just to make sure everyone's clear, license plate and front or rear of the car, we're not even getting the cab of the vehicle. We don't know how many people are in it. This is just tracking the vehicle. So that information, as far as being used for investigative purposes, has helped us numerous times in other investigations. The problem we have in this city is, we have very few of them. They already exist. They are up and around this city and in this county. They are up and around the state. They are in places you and I drive every day. So the information is being out there. We, we use a crime analysis center located in Orange County. Our information gets funneled directly to them, as does Poughkeepsie, as does Newburgh, as does Sarajevo, as does, does all of the jurisdictions around here. They are all members of the Hudson Valley CAC. We're very lucky that we have that partnership, because when a vehicle commits a crime in Kingston and gets located down in Newburgh, the Newburgh Police then can help us with that investigation. And I think that's important to keep, keep track, that this tool itself is for investigations, as Rennie mentions. It's not an enforcement mechanism, it's an investigative mechanism.
All right. Um, let's see. Jeffrey, have you got anything to add here? Nope, still thinking. Patrick?
Uh, is there, Chief, for this, is there any budget going forward? You're gonna need, uh, any money for this on a year-to-year basis?
We're, we're still trying to work that out right now with the vendor. Um, there are some costs for maintenance. Normally, the camera, uh, lifetimes are good between three and five years. We haven't had any issues with the ones we currently have right now. Our system is tied to the county system, so the, the server mechanism for it is maintained by the county. And that's essentially what we would be doing here, is buying the cameras and just attaching them to the current system that's in place. But we hope to have all those numbers worked out, uh, before we move forward with it.
All right. Anything else? All right, the way I see it right now, Doug, Tony, Steve, Don, and myself, we're definitely in favor. Uh, Rita is against. I still hear some questions, possibilities. I don't know, Michelle, do you have a stand now, or are you still waiting to make up your mind?
No, I just have still budgetary concerns. So, um, I just, I have a quick question, just as far as process procedure, uh, for Julie and the grant. Do we have to approve it before having all the answers so that they can go to contract?
Uh, what information are you looking for?
I'm sorry, Julie, I didn't hear you. So if, if, uh, do we, does the Finance Committee have to have this approved in order for you to go to contract for, to do a matching grant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Without the Finance, this is, actually, she has to have the Common Council's approval on that, or it has to be Common Council approval.
Right, correct, sorry.
Yep.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Yep.
So Julie, if, if, I was sorry, you, you said yes, right? You have to have this for to be able to move ahead, right?
In order to move ahead with their one for one match, yes. I, I would need the Council's approval.
Thank you.
To allocate the money.
Yep. All right. Uh...
Yes, I guess we'll find out tomorrow.
All right. Well, if anybody wants to change their mind, please let me know before council tomorrow night, all right? night, all right? Okay, then, uh, we'll move on from that one. Thank you for a spirited discussion there.
Well, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you all for, uh, for letting me run down from the barn. So I appreciate it. My apologies for being late.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, bye bye.
All right. Next item. 192. Uh, this is, um...
192 is to meet payroll for cover overtime, uh, for this city zoning officer. And looking at the 2021, we already agreed that this is problematical and we, we made changes to the budget for next year to reflect this. But this is, uh, you know, zero impact to cover a total of, uh, $3,390 to cover additional hours of work for the zoning enforcement officer. Zero impact.
All right, everybody okay with that? Hearing no objections, we'll move on to 193. Uh, this is, um, out of laws and rules, uh, resolution, supporting the return of adult inpatient behavioral health and detox units to Mary's Avenue campus. Uh, Jeffrey, can you fill us in on the details there?
Um, I will actually defer to older woman Hirsch on this. Uh, she made a great presentation at the laws and rules, uh, committee meeting about it.
All right. I'm sorry, Grant.
Uh, thank you, Jeffrey. It's just a supporting resolution, memorializing resolution, calling on the New York State Department of Health to deny an application that's been made by Westchester Medical Center to permanently remove our inpatient psychiatric beds and detox unit. Uh, at the start of COVID, we were, uh, informed that the beds would temporarily be moved over to Mid Hudson Regional so that we could make room for COVID overflow for the hospital. And now, uh, we've been informed the beds would not be returning and it's putting an undue, uh, stress and burden on our community and getting the appropriate treatment that they need. So we're just asking the Department of Health to, uh, deny any application. Thank you.
All right. Any questions about that? Everybody, uh, good with it? Hearing no objections to it then, we'll move on to resolution 194. Uh, capital projects, we're getting into the budget here. So we're looking at spending a total of $1,286,500 on various capital projects. I believe this reflects the removal of one item at, uh, finance as well as, uh, three items that were removed from the original quest from wastewater. Is that right, Doug?
That's correct. That's correct. The next 14 resolutions, by the way, are all budget related. This is three. 194, 195 and 196, uh, asked for $1,286,500 for the various capital items. And as Rennie already said, three or four items were already deleted to this, from this at, at the wrap up committee. And that the following resolutions are bond ordinance and the actual adoption of the bond ordinance and the actual bond ordinance to support this.
All right. So everybody good with the three of those? Everybody okay with the capital plan as it is now? All right, good. Then we will move on to 198. Uh, this is a change to the budget, removing, uh, vacant because new project manager position in the grants management department. Everybody okay with that? That was the one?
Wait, wait, did you, well, I think we skipped 197.
Skip 197, man.
I'm sorry, I thought that was part of the, uh, oh, I see what you're using. Yes, okay, sorry. Um, recommending, uh, budget to increase part-time salaries and benefits in the zoning department. This was the result of, uh, Eric Kitchen detailing, uh, how much work he has to do. Doug, you want to say anything about it?
It still goes with 192, which has already been said.
Well, no, no, 192 was, was a budget transfer to cover expenditures this year. 197 is to cover expenditures next year. So we're actually putting in the, into the budget so they were not, we don't have to do what we just did for this year. We're anticipating additional expenses, so we're putting it into the budget.
Right. So we've seen a large amount of, we've seen a large increase in, um, the necessity for inspections by the zoning officer because of new, uh, construction, new renovations, a lot of movement there. Uh, so this is actually a good thing, um, a good sign for the city. All right, so everybody good with that one?
Yeah, think so.
All right, then, uh, we're back to 198. Adopting a change to the mayor's recommended budget. This is to remove the vacant, uh, because new project managers position. This is what we did in order to free up money for other things such as the, um, increase in hours in the zoning department. Is everybody okay with this one?
Uh, no, I, I continue to be opposed to the removal of, of this position. I think it's necessary. Uh, we have so many projects coming forward and we'll get more. This one enabled us to get more, enabled us to, uh, uh, manage what we have, to, to get the receivables faster. Uh, I think it's false economy to remove this from, uh, from, from the budget. But I, I've stated the, the, these positions in the wrap-up meeting. I, I, I continue to oppose the removal of this. I do understand that if it did, if, if this resolution to remove it would, uh, uh, be defeated, then it sets in a domino effect because so many other revolutions, resolutions were key to this. That is, the monies that were saved by removal of this position were applied to everything else. But we'd have to, if, if in fact this did, uh, uh, was defeated, then a series of amendments would have to be, uh, proposed to, to balance this whole thing out. But anyway, I, I oppose it. Thank you.
Anybody else on this one? All right. I will note that we partially took care of that by adding hours, uh, in the, um, engineering department. So we go from that one to 199. This is a change also to increase contingency by $10,000 for a potential common counsel attorney. Uh, remember, we're building on precedent here. Uh, we've looked at this in a number of ways and this would simply be a safety backstop in an instance where there was, uh, disagreement between the executive or an issue that was between the executive and the legislative. So anybody comments on this one?
Yes, I am also opposed to this resolution on the basis that the, the, the city code clearly spells out how the common counsel will be represented in a case of when legal counsel is required. I oppose this also. Thank you.
Michelle Hirsch?
Uh, this doesn't go against, uh, this doesn't go against what our, uh, our, um, our charter says. Um, it would be if there was a conflict, there was an ethical conflict and that the corporation counsel felt that they could not represent us and then we would use the money, but they would still be our counsel. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Uh, resolution 200. Uh, this is to, uh, move the senior account clerk. This, uh, is this the one that's in the housing department?
From 69, 6995 to 6989, uh, where's that, John?
That's in the housing department.
Yeah, housing back to, um, uh, housing back to, I didn't realize, oh, I guess we voted this down in committee, right?
Yes.
No, we, we passed, we approved this in, in the wrap-up committee.
Well, it was, it, there was a motion and a second, so it does go to council floor, but it only, it was a one to four.
It was voted down. It was voted down. As all the, as Chairwoman, um, Schott said, it still has to be, it still had a first and a second. So it still has to come to the floor because the rest of the people who are not on finance have a chance to vote. It was voted down.
Right. Uh, so, Michelle, I'm sorry about our earlier conversation, but clearly it's here. I didn't, I didn't think that through. Do you want to speak to this?
So I made a motion to keep, uh, the senior account clerk, uh, in the Office of Economic Development, the budget line where they currently are located. Um, and that's actually the budget line where the Director of Housing Initiatives is currently in budget of, uh, economic development, but in the 2020 budget. And now in the 2021 budget, we are creating a whole new department, uh, to facilitate the land bank. Uh, but I don't believe that we were really aware that we were creating a whole new budget when we hired the head of the housing department initiatives. And, uh, as he told us in the city hall budget meeting, he needed this second full-time position to carry out, uh, the list grants and what is outlined in the housing, uh, report. And I don't know that everybody's read the housing report and understands everything. If that is, uh, you know, what we want to be doing next year.
Another possibility then, uh, as you, uh, you know, I discussed earlier before tonight's meeting, the possibility would actually be to move both of those positions or keep them in, um, community development. So John Tui, can I ask you a question here? If we put both of those positions instead of where they are currently in the budget, if we put them under, uh, community, uh, uh, development, would that have any effect on the budget? Would that just be a question of, you know, who they report to?
If you move them back, both back to, uh, the 6989 department, um, from a total financial impact, it wouldn't have an impact. Um, it could create some issues with, uh, who is overseeing that department or those budget lines and who's responsible for, say, office supplies? Are they both drawing off the same accounts and that, you know, who has access to what? Um, you know, because you're, you're basically co-mingling them. You have two, uh, department head level positions, uh, both reporting in the same department.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Tony Davis?
Hey, John, I thought when we were doing the wrap-up, I thought you said that and that they were, they got funding from, partial funding from the land, uh, land bank?
Yes.
If they were to be moved back, they would, they wouldn't receive that funding, right?
Well, if, if you have, I, my, my concern is, I, I wasn't sure what, what the purpose was for the move. Um, if, if the employee is still working and doing land bank work, they would be eligible for getting reimbursed, uh, for the land bank. Um, but if the intention, if, if, you know, the senior account clerk is no longer going to work for, um, the housing director, that, that's a different story.
Kevin Bryant, uh, can I ask you a question? Calling Kevin Bryant. Uh, my understanding, or, uh, my, I'm, I'm wondering here, I was speaking with Jackie DeSico about some other job positions and, uh, I would wonder whether or not simply moving the line is something that would be, uh, in the purview of the common counsel. Uh, in other words, um, is it up to us to decide whether this position is where it is now or somewhere else if we're not making a monetary change to it? So, um, that's what I would be curious about. Uh, in theory, I have no real, uh, concern about moving this back underneath, um, uh, community development. Uh, and there would be a question though about the, um, uh, you know, what, uh, what, what's the ultimate purpose? Uh, what, what do we, what would be the advantage of doing that besides not creating a new department, as it were? So that's what I'm wondering about. Yes, Michelle Hirsch?
So it's, it's not our community development. It would be moving it back to economic development where both jobs already are in the 2020 budget. And when we were, uh, looking at this hire for the head of the housing initiatives in March, we were told that this would be a hire for this year and based on performance, we could decide whether or not we are going to budget it for 2021 based, you know, on performance. So COVID did happen, so I don't feel like we have a lot of performance to, uh, evaluate here and to create a new, a complete department. So I just feel like we should keep it in economic development for another year and give it, uh, the chance to see where things go.
So Mandy Bruck would be the person who would decide how, uh, the, uh, senior account clerk would spend his or her time as opposed to Michael Gillyard?
I don't know. How is it set up now? It's already set up. The, they're all in there on economic, working in economic development right now. This is a brand new department that we, I, I don't know if anyone else was informed that we're going to have a housing department until a press release went out with a housing report.
Right. But I'm asking, how do you envision who reports to whom if we move, if we kept it under economic development?
However, it's working now because it's already in economic development for 2020.
Except I believe it's, is it a vacant position? Or we're moving this actual person?
They're in...
Right now, hey, Rennie, um, right now you have a, the senior account clerk is occupied. Obviously Mike Gillyard's position is occupied. Um, those are filled positions. The part-time position that's in housing is not filled. That's, that's vacant.
What's the part-time position? I'm sorry, Ren.
Go ahead, Tony.
What's the part-time position, John?
The part-time position in housing is the, that's the position for the list grant. I, Tony, that was a position you and I spoke about, the, the revenues and expenses balance.
Okay. All righty, so if we were to move this all back on the economics and that part-time position would be eliminated?
No, I, well, I, I feel like if you're good, if, if, if the council desires to make a move, um, I mean, obviously the mayor, mayor wanted to keep it separate. That was his wish for clarity, for finances and, and keeping them separate. But if the council were to, um, combine them, I, I, I feel like you have to combine the whole thing, not just certain employees. You know, as Michelle said, the way it was this year is everyone was combined in one department. Um, that does present some challenges, but, um, but if you're going to do it, that would be the cleanest one.
So is anyone going to lose their position if we combine them back?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, I think you should ask Kevin.
Kevin, are you there?
Um, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, the, the, so here's what we're wondering about. Um, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, we're looking at the positions that are now in what's called the, uh, Department of Housing Initiatives. Uh, and we're wondering about, uh, keeping those under the wing, under the aegis of the Economic Development Department rather than putting them out on their own. And, uh, so there's a question that has to do with, um, because there wouldn't be any financial difference, is this something that impinges on the power of... financial difference, is this something that impinges on the power of the mayor to decide how to organize, uh, the bureaucracy? Or, uh, is that something that we can do, um, uh, in order to, uh, maximize the possibility of all of these folks working in economic development, rather than being dedicated solely to housing initiatives?
Yes, this is a separation of powers issue, and it's clearly under the executive branch. So you're stepping into an area that is under the authority of the mayor. And I think that while you guys have ideas and it's good, there's something to be said about sharing them and trying to work with him on these issues, because you never know. Um, he may say, you know what, that's a great idea. And let's work to try and make that. And I'm willing to partner with you on that. But now you're talking about day-to-day operations that are clearly under the authority of the mayor.
All right. So our, our power would be to change any salaries here, but not to determine what line they go under if there's no monetary change?
Well, see, now you're talking about changing structure, uh, and who is reporting to whom, which is a decision that is the mayor's.
Okay. Right. Okay. Uh, so does that answer everybody's question? Anybody got any questions here? Uh, is anybody wanting to follow through with this? Patrick O'Reilly?
So what would the vote on this essentially do?
Well, if we vote it down, if everybody votes against it, then it does nothing. Uh, if we vote for it, uh, the way it's listed right now, actually, we'd only move the one position, or rather, keep the one position in the, um, uh, Economic Development Department. However, since we're not changing, our power is to change the money, so we could increase or decrease the salary. That's our power. What Kevin just said is because of separation of powers, we don't have the authority to simply say, oh, we want this position in that department, not this department. Does that answer your question?
So if we vote this in, correct, Andrea is going to tell us that we just did something wrong?
Yeah, Andrea will. I think Kevin will too, and the mayor will also.
Um, at the, at the, this will happen at the, uh, Commonwealth Council meeting?
Yeah, that's where the vote on this would happen, correct?
Right. So when, when we're doing this, it would, uh, we would be told that this is, uh, not within our power?
Out of order. Uh huh. That's how I understand it. Uh, Doug?
If we vote this in, it just means we're, we're, we as the legislative branch is trying to ma- micromanage what the, what the executive branch can do. So I would vote this down.
Yep. Is, is that clarifying for you there, Patrick? You'll work on it. All right. Anybody else? Uh, is, is anybody, anybody else in favor of this one? As written, uh, because we also talked about if we were going to put all those positions under economic development, we'd have to amend this resolution on the floor tomorrow night. Uh, and again, uh, I don't think that we would be in proper order to do that because of what Kevin said. All right. Anything else on that one then?
Let's move on.
Let's move on. All right. Uh, the next one, Resolution 201, adopting change to the mayor's recommended budget, uh, to, this is basically start date of the vacant engineering tech position and increase the money's available for it. And this is, uh, what we were saying, this is where, uh, project management could be, uh, taken on. More project management capacity would be in this position. Comments? Anybody, uh, concerned with this one? Everybody okay with this one? This has the advantage too of not increasing any positions. Yes, Tony Davis?
This trifile, because it says, this is 201 we're on, right?
Yes, sir.
This is the start date of the vacant engineering tech position, an increase in the sewer fund. It's, it's the money coming out of, going into sewer fund from this or something? I'm sorry.
Uh, the, the, the pay for that one comes out of both, uh, the two different sources.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And so because of that, uh, there would be a very small increase in the sewer fund payment of one penny. So, right, John? Yes, John?
Yeah, sorry. Um, there, there's a couple of things on this resolution I should just point out. Um, there's references in 2020 and 2021, and I see July 11th and January 11th. The move would be from July 1, 2021 to January 1, 2021. And regarding the pay, yeah, it's a, a position is split between a general fund and sewer fund. And Randy, what, what was your specific question on that?
Uh, no, I was just pointing out that, that there's two different, uh, it, it, it comes from two different budgets. Because Tony was asking about what the sewer fund references to.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. I mean, there's, there's a number of administrative positions in the city that are split between a general sewer. Um, and those employees in engineering department who work on sewer projects will have a split with the sewer.
Good. All right. Good. Um, let's see then, if we're all good with that one, we move to 202. Uh, so the result of these various changes from the previous four or five resolutions, uh, would actually allow us to reduce the appropriation of fund balance by $31,000. And so that's what this one is about. We followed through with, uh, these, uh, previous resolutions. This has a positive effect on the fund balance. Any comments?
You're right. It balances out all the, 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 the three or four other resolutions we made. This is what's left over. It's a positive change. So goes back in, it goes credited to the fund balance.
All right. Everybody okay with that one? Good. This would give us some more money to spend in case of emergencies here in the COVID crisis. Uh, so all right, then Resolution 203 is the general one approving the city's 2021 general fund budget. Everybody okay with that one? All right. 204 is approval of, I think that should be a dollar sign there, uh, the, uh, uh, tax levy, $17,675,495, uh, to be raised by the city's budget. This again would represent the same amount as the last, I believe it's five years in a row, four years or five years, uh, which in essence is a tax decrease if we put it against the rate of inflation. This would be every budget of the current mayor would in effect be a tax decrease by keeping the tax levy at the same rate. So everybody okay with that? All right. Uh, 205, authorization to adopt the homestead, non-homestead-based proportion ration, ratio rather, for the 2021 tax year. Doug, can you give us a little word about what that means so we're all clear?
Dan, do you have any comment on this? Dan Baker? Dan, are you still with us? Well, he spoke to this and he, and, and, and as a result of his recommendations, this is where the, the resolution came from. And it was approved by unanimously at the, by the Finance Committee at the, at the wrap-up meeting.
Right. There is a long history of, uh, this particular ratio, long and sordid history, uh, which we could go into. But the basic idea is that this is trying to maintain something of the balance that we currently have, uh, so that it doesn't get out of whack, which would do if we were not careful. Uh, John, do you want to speak to it at all?
Sure, Randy. Uh, so yeah, the, the ratio as, uh, the report that Dan Baker makes to the Finance Committee is that there's a number of options for the city to elect. Um, the percentage ratio that the count, that passed through the Finance Committee was the 20% shift. It was the same percent shift that the Commonwealth Council adopted last for the 2020 budget. Um, it's also the shift that keeps the percentages as close as possible to the prior year, uh, minimizing, um, swings in the tax rate between the two classes.
Mm-hmm.
And it, and it would be, as Randy, as you mentioned, would be consistent with the changes that the Commonwealth Council has adopted in the past. Uh, we've been trying to make a shift. The 20% shift has been opted in by the council a number of times.
Okay. So everybody good with that one? Everybody in favor of some order here? All right. Uh, 206, approval of the sewer fund at $5 million and change. Everybody enjoy having sewers that work. Everybody okay with this one? All right. 207, uh, approval of the city sewer rate at $6.20 per unit. Everybody good with that one? Okay. Um, I think we're done with all the budget ones. Uh, Patrick O'Reilly? Yes, sir.
Is that $6.20 per unit increase, decrease? What is, anybody know?
John Tui? That's a one cent per unit increase.
So that would be a very low percentage?
Yes. Yes. Far under 1%.
You okay with that, Patrick? Anything else?
Sorry.
Um, so Resolution 208, adding a stop sign, uh, on Bond Street. Everybody okay with that? Technically, this should be Resolution 007 anyway. Uh, Resolution 209?
Oh, let's move on. Appreciate the effort though. We need that.
It's after nine o'clock. Resolution, uh, 209, uh, adding handicap parking on Hone Street. 210, handicap parking on Linwood Place. There was an issue, I believe, with that one. Steve Shabbat?
Actually, I want to, just to back up, um, the Resolution 208, I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but Bond Street is spelled differently on, it's mentioned twice in a resolution, it's spelled differently.
Yeah. So Alyssa, if you can take care of that, we'd appreciate it.
Well done.
Uh, all right. So, uh, Linwood Place, is this the address we were looking at, uh, that had the dilemma because, uh, of alternate side of the street parking kind of?
Yeah, I talked, no, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Patrick.
I talked to the, uh, resident at Linwood Place and, and they're fine with, uh, the, uh, signs being put in farther along and not on the other side. So they were, they were very happy just to have it every other day.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Uh, Michelle Hirsch?
I, I just had a quick question, um, from Public Safety the other night, the no parking at 317 Hasbrook. Do we actually vote it down? I, I don't see a committee report.
What? What, what one are you talking about, Michelle?
Um, 317 Hasbrook, the one with the curb cutouts for the driveway?
Yes, we, I, I think that was a table for more in information or something.
Okay, okay. Just double check. Thank you.
We didn't vote on it on the table then.
Sorry. Okay. 211, removing handicapped on South Manor. Uh, 212, approval for adding DPW charges to the 2021 property tax bills. Everybody okay with that? An efficient process there. 213, approval for adding building safety division charges to 2021 property tax bills. Same idea. Everybody good with that? Okay, resolution, results, there's another word that needs to be looked at. Resolution 214 needs to spell correctly. Uh, approval for adding energy improvement corporation charges to the 2021 property tax bills. Everybody okay with that one? All right. And then the last one, resolution reallocating $4,500 from Kingston City Schools internship program to Business Alliance of Kingston's Made in Kingston. Who was this?
Yeah, where did that come from?
Community development.
Community development. Community development.
Can you tell us what it's about, Steve?
Yeah, yeah. We kind of moved this up a little bit because it, the Made in Kingston event is coming up. Um, it would usually be in our, our usual deliberations, um, about block grants, but, uh, we decided to move this up a little because I think the event is next week. Um, and we usually help with the funding for this. It's a good community event. Uh, it's really a, uh, I don't know, a labor of love this year. Tried to, they figured out a way how to do it online this year. So there will be no, uh, on-scene uh, sales and shows. It's all going to be online. Um, all the sales will be online. Um, so I gotta, have to give them credit. They really thought this out and they, they come up with a way to, uh, to get this done. You know, I really thought this was going to be out for this year, but, um, they are going to be moving forward. Um, this is what we usually fund for them. So, uh, you know, the only, we just moved it up a little, that's all, because, because time was of the essence.
All right. Don Tolloman?
Money is to be used for their marketing of the event.
And this is a normal.
Mostly marketing. Yeah. There are, there's a couple stipends now because of the way they're doing it. Um, most, the bulk is for, for advertising and, and promotion, uh, but they do have a webmaster this year. Um, I'm trying to think there were, I think there were three positions related to getting this done online that they felt they needed a little more expertise. Um, so that's in there. That's in there also.
All right, Tony Davis?
Uh, why is it stated?
And Michelle Hirsch?
Reallocating from Kingston City Schools. So you took it from that, that program and gave it to the Kings, the Business Alliance? Is that what happened?
I'll be sure on that. I'm not really quite sure why that's stated like that. Um, I can find out for you. Andrea, do you know?
I do know. So that internship that was allocated last year, I think when you were chair, Tony, but then they couldn't use the money, most likely because of COVID, when the schools closed.
Okay.
So that money left to then be reallocated. So they kind of in essence said, we can't use this money and gave it back. So we didn't really take it from them, but then we had to reallocate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Michelle Hirsch?
I had a, a question, and then now I have another question based on that, um, exchange. So if we're reallocating based on what the head person said, uh, when they presented to us, do we have to have a hearing for that? And then my second question is, did you, is there, uh, community block COVID, the second round? Did you guys allocate that? Are we voting on that tomorrow night? Okay.
We haven't done that yet. We will be, uh, setting.
Yeah, Steve.
Go ahead, Andrea.
That'll be the, um.
Um, we will be, uh.
That's confusing me.
All right, any last words here? Don Tolloman?
Last words on this resolution or for the meeting?
For the meeting.
Yeah, I was wanting to bring to the, back to the floor. Last month, we, there was the issue of the, the budget allocation for the intersection at Planet Wings, Pine Grove and Grand over there and we were unable to, because two members of the council were absent. We were unable to achieve a super majority on debt approval, so it didn't pass. And before we speak to it, Kevin, Brian, are you there? Is this the right place to be addressing this? Kevin, Kevin?
Go ahead, Doug, I had a long conversation with Kevin about it, so I think Doug can speak to it, what the procedure is. Although it looks like he's having a hard time finding the unmute button. Oh, there we go, one of the other. Kevin, did you hear what Don was asking there?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
He's asked, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
It's about the approving the budget for the intersection at Pine Grove and Planet Wings. And.
Procedure for bringing that back to, to, to vote on, on Tuesday night, tomorrow night, because there were two members absent from the council last month when we voted on it.
So you're talking about relative to the budget?
No, that's, that's not in the budget.
To the bond. Are we talking about the bond?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so we're talking about a motion to reconsider from the floor, which will bring that original resolution that went down back up. So it's a, it's a motion to reconsider the vote on the bond, which would, motion would be made, there would be a first and second. And then obviously no opposition voting gets approved. And then once again, you would be voting on the bond. It has to be done, it's a motion to reconsider that would be made from the floor. Thank you.
All right, Patrick O'Reilly?
Does anybody remember what the vote was last time the count?
It was actually five in favor, two opposed. And you need a super majority of six, and it's an absolute number. It doesn't matter how many people are actually there.
So it's actually five, four?
Technically right, because of the two absences, it would be listed as five, four. But because of the two absences, that's what gives us, that's what allows for rather, the motion to reconsider to be entertained.
So should we discuss it tonight?
Well, if anybody wants to speak to it, certainly welcome to.
I'd like to speak to it.
Sure.
So this is, this is my ward and it seems to make sense for a few reasons. The first reason is safety, most important reason. According to John Schulteis's data, there are more accidents, this is one of the most accident prone, accident prone intersections in the city. And, and because it's confusing how it intersects with Prince and Grand Street. It, it is a liability to us. So that is the number one reason I think to go ahead with it. The second reason is the, the fact that this is the end, the eastern end to the Broadway streetscape. So you know, Kristen Wilson was, was going into detail with me and a couple of other members of the council, I think. Just the fact that all the traffic lights from the traffic circle to this light will be synchronized. And if this one is, we don't approve this budget, that will not happen. And this, so that will potentially create traffic backups. And, and sort of not finish the nice, all the investment in Broadway. Sort of it'll, it'll disrupt the, the eastern end of it. You know, I was talking to Tony about this earlier and, you know, he made a good point about, you know, the fact that this project has cost us more than we expected. And, you know, the acquisition Planet Wings and now there's going to be new money needed for the demolition and the asbestos abatement. And it comes down to a question of, you know, is it, is it good money after bad money? You know, do we, do we just stop the whole project for this reason? And, and I think the net effect of this would be a safer intersection. And one big benefit, which is that Midtown will in the end have a public gathering space that where the Planet Wings is now. The Midtown does not have any place to, to meet up, to have pop up, you know, market or art show or performance. Uptown has Academy Green, downtown has the waterfront and Block Park, Wery Park. Midtown doesn't have any such place. So this is, it won't be big, but I think it will be significant for Midtown and a nice amenity for the neighborhood. So all things considered, I think that we should vote to, to complete this, this intersection and get the work done.
Steve Shabbat, then Tony Davis?
All right, thanks, Randy. Yeah, I, I voted for last time. I'm, I, I'm not going to change my mind on this. I think for, pretty much for what Donna said. I said this last time, I think that intersection is, is terrible. It really needs to be worked for safety reasons and and I know it's aesthetics, but you really can't overlook aesthetics too much. Especially what we're doing on Broadway with the whole streetscape. We're really trying to put in a, you know, a showpiece for people who come into the city and go down Broadway. This has been a topic for years and years, long before I even dreamt of running for, for council. This has been a topic to make Broadway shine again. This is an opportunity to put something in, you know, with this, with the new streetscape. As Don said, there's going to be a nice little park there. You know, just getting, getting rid of that building will be a huge addition, you know, aesthetically. You know, and I just, I can't discount the aesthetics here. But that aside, safety should be paramount here. And we've heard over and over again, how many accidents there's, there's been there. And you're not, how many close calls have been there? I know I've been involved in many close calls there. You know, so you, we don't want to discount public safety and, you know, and I hate to, you know, keep saying this, but, you know, I really, I don't want to discount the aesthetics of this. And, you know, I, I think it's really going to add to the character of, of Broadway. So I'm going to, I'm going to stick with my vote.
All right, Tony?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on this issue? Kevin?
Just so you know, the motion to reconsider would have to be moved by someone who voted in favor. I'm sure you know that. I just thought it would be good to just remind you.
Always good to clarify. We appreciate it. Better safe than sorry, as they say. All right. Yes, sir.
And who were the two, who were the two non-votes? And besides me and Patrick?
Jeffrey and Rita.
Thank you.
Jeffrey?
No, I was just responding to Tony's question.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I thought you wanted to speak. All right. Okay, Patrick?
Jeffrey, you have any thing to say about why you voted that way?
Uh, no, basically what, what Don just mentioned about the expenditure, the fact that you know, I'm still just, I'm still having a hard time thinking about this. When it was proposed to us, at least when it was proposed to me in a private meeting, I was told that this was to be wholly grand funded and no cost to the taxpayers and that hasn't been the case. So.
We do want to keep in mind that there's $700,000 on the table from the state of New York through Kevin Cahill. $50,000 is through CDBG funds for the removal of the asbestos. So while there are expenses, there are also monies in support of this project that will ease the cost. And I think too, you know, there's something really important to think about, you know, demonstrating that we want to invest in creating an inviting and open environment along Broadway, because most of Broadway is, you know, buildings right up to the street, basically. And this is one of the crucial things of urban design is to have some green space that's dedicated to being able to hang out, being able to have a place where people can meet each other after they go to the various restaurants in that area in the summertime. It's a great place for people to go and hang out, talk, play music and so forth. Patrick O'Reilly?
I just, just concur with you, you know, I went to one of those meetings myself, the with the mayor and I did not believe at that time that it was going to cost twice what it, what the original proposal was for. And I was, I believe, I was led to believe that it was going to be fully funded. Also, we were going to pay for the $400,000 building, have it torn down by probably the DPW or something like that. And then the grant was supposed to pay for the rest. That was my understanding too, Jeffrey. So I, I'm with you on that. It does seem to be, things have seemed to change 100% in the cost.
Any other comments? Michelle Hirsch? There you go.
Hi, sorry. While this project's been ongoing long before I was in office and I do understand all those concerns and I shared some of those concerns as well, including, you know, the sewer down below. I do see this as a vital economic development project for the Midtown area. We have kids walking there, going back and forth to the high school, going to the Y, going through that intersection. The Y is expanding their park behind it. So we will have additional, you know, potential additional traffic there. We actually have more traffic. Also, the Fuller Shirt Factory building is open now and has employees in the building. So it, traffic is increasing in that area there. And so I look at it as, you know, positive economic development and then also safety issues. So I will still be keeping my yes vote.
Thank you very much for that. All right, anybody else? Going once, twice, three times. One last thing real quick then. I sent you all an email noting that Valerie Dwyer is organizing a 12 days of Christmas appreciation for local law enforcement. If you're interested in taking part, it has to do with providing and delivering some food to one of the three main.